Okay, we'll go ahead and call the special city council work session to order. Were you gonna take role, Judy, or not? You don't need to.
It's not an actual meeting. I can if you want me to.
We don't need to. That's fine. That's fine. We only have two things on the agenda tonight. The first thing we have on the agenda is the Eagle Lake Sewer System update. And we have Larry Kleindahl, along with a number of his staff members that will be here to do a presentation for us on that. He'll give us that update. And then, following that discussion, then we're gonna be talking about our budget. So those are the things that we have on the agenda for today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Larry Kleindahl, the county administrator for Candyway County. Ike, did you wanna make any opening comments? I don't think you were going to, but...
No.
Okay. So, good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us and excited to come in and give a little background update on the Eagle Lake Sewer System. We've had, this would be our seventh meeting, we're having discussions with the city on a semi-formal basis, and this is a good opportunity to give an update. I'm gonna ask Mike Gerbits from Downhill Associates to come on up and do a quick presentation, a little background, and then we'll, I'll step up and answer questions as you ask.
Thank you. Mike? Of course, most of us are very familiar with Mike. He helped us with our wastewater treatment plant as well, and I know you've done a lot of design work on sewer systems. So, welcome back to Wilmer. Do you remember these council chambers?
Always good to be here. Always good to be back in Wilmer.
Good, good.
And so now, we're gonna talk about the Eagle Lake Collection System, which is part of the city's system. And I don't have a lot of material. I wanted to kinda quickly get to the heart of the matter, not spend a lot of time on this. We met, I think, the last time, a number of council members met and talked about this issue was July 25th. So, at the July 25th meeting, we went into great amount of detail. That kinda started at the very beginning and walked everybody through everything. Today, it's just kinda to give the executive summary of the situation and kinda open it up for hopefully some productive discussion. Now, when we met on July 25th, I think, Ike, someone asked a really good question. What does it cost the city of Wilmer to maintain the Eagle Lake Collection System? So, Jim and his crew has treated, since really the beginning of time, since this system was commissioned, the city of Wilmer has maintained and operated that Eagle Lake Collection System. And that continues today. Jim and his crew operate and maintain that Eagle Lake Collection System. If you look at the top right of this slide, just refreshing everybody's memory, the county, the county charges the Eagle Lake Sanitary District customers, the users, three hundred, in round numbers, $320,000 annually. Three nineteen, $320,000 annually. That's the revenue that the county collects. Two hundred and eighty-five of that, two hundred and eighty-five thousand of that, goes directly to the city. Okay? So that's the revenue that the city receives from the Eagle Lake Sanitary District. There's a difference of about $35,000. The county holds on to that and puts it into their reserves. Someone asked, what does it really cost the city of Wilmer to maintain that system? I think, let's see, large, large maintenance items get passed directly to the county. If it's less than, is it $500? Less than $500, the city takes care of it. And there's not, there's not many charges of the $500 variety annually. So, the majority of the cost is shown there in the orange box. The total cost to the city to operate and maintain that system is $12,000 in electricity, $7,500 worth of labor, and about $1,000 in mileage. So about $20,000 annually, it costs the city to maintain the system.
So, Mike, on that FTE, that's like a point five, a point, zero, 0.1 FTE, right?
Yeah. You know, I think with benefits and everything like that, you could say that's a tenth of a full-time person.
Right.
So it's not, it's not very taxing from a, you know, the human side of it.
Right.
It's about a tenth of an FTE. And so this is a follow-up to a question that was asked last time. I didn't have this information handy or in a slide last time. Okay. So, just at the very highest level, the Eagle Lake rate payers pay to the county $35,000 and to the city, $285,000. All of, just kinda reminding everybody, everything that's collected, all the wastewater that's collected from around Eagle Lake is discharged ultimately to, this is just a simple schematic, is ultimately discharged to the city's collection system and routed to the wastewater treatment facility on the far west side of town. And that, of course, that $285,000 of revenue then is used to pay for the cost of treatment, but it's also can be used to pay for pump stations along that, along that route, that long yellow route. They're kinda treated just like any other user within the city. So, the county wanted to know, what condition is the Eagle Lake Sanitary District System in? What costs are in front of us? As we look out into the future, the system was installed, I think, in the early eighties. What costs are in front of us? And in general, the system was designed, we'd probably never be able to, a lake district probably wouldn't be able to afford or construct a system like this. It's, it's done the right way. There isn't, there aren't a bunch of grinder pumps and pressure sewers around the lake. There are true lift stations, just like you have in town here, true lift stations, force mains, and eight-inch gravity sewer, or ten-inch gravity sewer. So it's a very, it's a well-designed system, a very robust system. But it's old. So, we kinda put the future capital cost to keep the system operating the way it's supposed to in two buckets. The zero-to-five-year bucket and the five-to-ten-year bucket. The zero-to-five years is, let's call it in round numbers, $200,000. It's shown there as $189,000. That's the zero-to-five-year bucket. The five-to-ten-year, now we need to, you know, make some major improvements to a couple of pump stations. That's about $1.7 million. Again, that's not an immediate need, but it's out there five to ten years. So, from a near-term perspective, the city wanted to borrow the money for those near-term improvements, that extra $35,000 a year that they're collecting and keeping, that's adequate to pay for those near-term improvements. It's more than adequate to pay for those near-term improvements. Another way to look at, I think they have cash reserves beyond $200,000, they'd be able really to do those near-term improvements with the cash on hand. Okay? So no rate increase to deal with the, the zero-to-five-year costs. But if you look out to that five-to-ten-year timeframe, when some significant work does need to be done, call it $1.7 million, now, because of the, the limited number of rate payers, I think there's about 350 rate payers up in Eagle Lake, now that $1.7 million becomes a pretty significant burden. If they were to borrow 20 years from the state revolving fund or the PFA, that's a subsidized program, they could get money on the order of 2.75%, 3%. The city of Wilmer used that to fund the wastewater treatment plant. Then those rate payers for that $1.7 million would be seeing a $26 a month increase. That's, that's a pretty healthy increase. If, one of the things that we'll talk about, one alternative here is that the city would just retain, take over ownership. For years, you know, since the system was commissioned back in the eighties, the city's kinda treated the system as one of their own. They've operated it, they've maintained it. And as we sit here today, the, the rate payers up in Eagle Lake are paying the same rates, actually a little bit more than people are here in the city. If the city decided to take over ownership and they treated it just like one of their own, and those pump stations and those force mains and those collections sewers, those gravity sewers were treated like all the other sewers in town, then the city of Wilmer rate payers, the city of Wilmer rate payers would see an increase of about $1.2 a month. Okay? $26 a month for Eagle Lake rate payers to fund that. If Eagle Lake becomes just like all the rest of the city, then it's $1.2 a month. Pretty significant difference. Somebody asked, I think the last time we were together, does the city of Wilmer have any outstanding debt? Do they have the flexibility to kinda do what they want? Do they have any obligations? Usually the obligations are tied to the money. Are there any loans or debt that give them obligations? So we looked into that. The Eagle Lake project was funded by Farmer's Home. That loan's long been paid off, and there are no financial strings for the Eagle Lake Sanitary District or the county. The county currently owns it, owns that system. So there are no financial strings. There are no obligations. The, the, the existing wastewater treatment facility, the city's wastewater treatment facility, the planning for that was done in 2005. And when you build a new treatment facility, you have to write a facility plan, you have to write a report that goes to the MPCA, and they review that, and they make sure it's the right project, an approvable project. And when the city of Wilmer, the city of Wilmer, not the county, but when the city of Wilmer did that facility plan in 2005, they included the Eagle Lake Collection System. Okay? The service area boundary for the wastewater treatment facility extends up to the northern boundaries of Eagle Lake. So that was always the intent, that facility was built with the intent that Eagle Lake would always be within the service area. And the city received a PFA or a state loan to fund that. But the city ended the city-county contractual relationship. We're all aware of that. That's why we're here tonight. And one could say, without any obligations, Eagle Lake doesn't have any financial obligations, that Eagle Lake or the county would, if something significant happened, if there was a change, then Eagle Lake would have the ability to take that wastewater someplace else. Okay? The state would probably view it that way, that there might be a compelling reason to go someplace else with that wastewater. So that, without those, without that necessarily, those obligations or those requirements, the county said, well, what would happen if we took it up north to the Eagle Lake, excuse me, to the county treatment facility? Is there capacity? And there's adequate capacity, as we sit here today, the Eagle Lake, excuse me, the county treatment facility has about 200,000 gallons per day of available capacity. Eagle Lake represents, on average, about 60,000 gallons per day. So there's ample capacity to accept the flow from Eagle Lake if, if someone wanted to do that. And the compelling thought from the county's perspective is, we could take this $320,000 that we're generating in revenue and keep it. And that, $320,000, then would help offset the cost of treatment up there at the county, and it would help pay for the infrastructure to get it up there. So it's just, it's an alternative. So as we boil this down, as we sit here today, it seems like there's really three alternatives. The first one is that we could do just what we talked about. The county could route all that flow to their county facility and retain the $320,000 in annual revenue. And what's ironic about that, it's kind of ironic, that, that lost $285,000 in annual revenue from the city means the rate payers in the city of Wilmer would pay more. City would lose $285,000 of revenue. And what that would mean is, every rate payer, on average, would see a $38 per year increase. Okay? So that's kinda the financial picture if the county decided to take this flow north. Now, one option, you know, listing all the feasible, or all the options, some more palatable than others, another option is that the county would continue to flow into the city system, or, excuse me, Eagle Lake would continue to flow into the city system, but the county would own it. But that, again, if we remember five to 10 years from now, when that major work needs to be done, those Eagle Lake rate payers would see a $315 per year increase. That's pretty significant. And then the final option, or the third option, is they would continue to flow, and I think this is what the county would like to see happen, that Eagle Lake continues, it's just status quo in terms of operation and maintenance. The city would continue to operate that collection system. All the wastewater would continue to flow to the city of Wilmer. And the $285,000 annually would continue to flow to the city. And there wouldn't need to be a rate increase. There's enough cash on hand to take care of those near-term items. There wouldn't have to be a rate increase for the next five to 10 years. Okay? But when that day does come, and it's time to spend the $1.7 million to upgrade those pumping stations, then everyone would pay for that, just like they do when you did Sperryville Pump Station and some of the other pump stations. Then, all the residents, Eagle Lake residents and city of Wilmer residents would see about a $15 per year, or that $1.22 per month increase. And I think the counties here are hoping that that, that that would be a reasonable alternative. I think if we, if we look back at the original intent, I think that was always really the intent, when that agreement was put together, that someday, someday the city would just take over ownership of the system. I think everybody probably envisioned that Wilmer would have grown up into, into that neck of the woods, and that'd be part of the city, but that hasn't happened yet. But I think the original intent was someday, the city would just take over ownership of the system. So that's really kinda my executive summary of the situation. I think, I think those are really the three alternatives that are out there.
So I just have one question before we get started. Currently, and I think I know the answer to this already, but currently Candyway County collects the sewer fee through the taxes, and then those costs are passed on to the city. And then, so the, the county then pays the city twice a year for that payment. And so, under this proposal, we would leave everything the same. The county would continue to collect it through the tax base and then continue to pay the city those funds, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. So then, what I'm seeing in this last one, then, is that the city retains the $285, so the $315 that's collected?
Ah, I'm glad you, thank you. So yes, retains the $285, plus that other $35,000. Now, I made it confusing, but there's another $35,000. The city, excuse me, the county is collecting $319,000 annually.
Right.
All of that. Thank you. All of that would go to the city, in addition to the cash reserves on hand, and that's north of $200,000, about $250,000. $250, thank you.
So, council, at the last meeting, actually a week ago tonight, I said that it's imperative that we get this in front of us so that we give the county some direction as far as what we as a council are wanting to do. But just as importantly is that the Eagle Lake residents have been kind of pushed off, if you will, on the decision we're gonna make, and they really haven't been given clear direction. That was clearly articulated at the last meeting we had in July. And so the Eagle Lake residents want to know exactly what the, what the city's, what the council's decision is going to be as well, so they can start planning for their future. So what we have in front of us is, we've got two opportunities, actually three, two opportunities if the city retains ownership, or the third opportunity is that, that everything just gets rerouted and goes to the county facility, which is up in Green Lake, that we're all aware of. If we do the debt service that's being talked about, and if you go back to that slide, I think it's three slides back, it's a $1.85, was it? $1.22.
Yep.
So additional cost to the taxpayer for the city of Wilmer to continue with that long-term improvement would be $1.22. If we lose that revenue, go back to the slide you just were at.
Yep.
It ends up being $3.17 that the Wilmer taxpayer has to pick up.
Yeah.
Because of the offset, the expense.
Yep.
So you have, you have the revenue side and you have the expense side. And so, in reality, this really makes a lot of sense to continue the flow going the way that the county presented it to us in July. We had some additional outlying questions, outliers, and the county has been gracious enough to get that together, and Mr. Gerbits have been able to crunch those numbers along with our staff of getting the true cost of what it costs to do that business. And so, what I think the county is wanting from us tonight is just some direction on how we wanna proceed. The other piece of this is, is that, as I said last Monday, is that we would try to have something back in front of the council for the last meeting in December. And then, all of 2018, all of the ins and outs would be all worked out through 2018. In 2019, the new plan would take effect. So, we'd probably need to sign a one-year extension again, right? So we need to sign a letter of intent to extend for one additional year as a council, with the understanding that in 2018, we'll work out all the details, probably would be a slight increase in service fee to Eagle Lake folks, from what they're currently paying. They inkled that to us in July, that they would be willing to look at a small increase, but not a large increase. And I don't believe there's been an increase for a number of years. Is that right, Rose?
Every year.
Every year there's been an increase?
Yeah, the last few years, it's been quite large. What are the points I...
You wanna come to the mic so the public can hear ya, Rose, please? Rose serves on the Eagle Lake Board.
I'm Rosie Erickson. I've been on the, I've been the secretary on the Eagle Lake Board, Sewer Board for, somebody asked me, and I can't remember, but it's probably 20 years. One of the things that maybe everybody doesn't understand is that the original agreement back in 1990 said that the Eagle Lake's fees would not be increased through the years any more than the average city of Wilmer fees.
Right.
Well, I just, you know, last September, I did a spreadsheet, and over the last 10 years, our increases have been increasing more and more and more. And if they had, if the agreement had been keeping that level as the agreement stated, we've overpaid $300,000 in the last 10 years to the city of Wilmer, just because that agreement wasn't met. The other thing the board may not understand is that our, forever and ever, since our sewer was started in '71, I think, our fees have been going to the city to help, blending with all of the expenses that the city sewer has. But in the meantime, the Eagle Lake Sewer is paying all of its major improvements, other than $500. The first $500 the city covers. If we have to replace a pump, if we have to replace a station or a line, we pay that out of our Eagle Lake Sewer Fund. This is why we have to charge a little bit more than you're charging us, because we have to build a fund to cover our expenses. If something gets damaged, needs repaired, replaced, we're covering that on our own. And we've been doing that forever and ever. We've been helping the city with all of their expenses, but we've also been covering all of our own expenses. So this is why we're having to charge more than you're charging us. Plus, you have no administration fees for us. We do all of the collection. Like you explained, we pay the city twice a year. It's collected through the taxes. We don't have meters. We're based on the average user that the city has. So I think, and like I say, we have $250,000 on hand. We have been maintaining quite nicely through the years by being able to keep enough on hand. But one of the things that, one of the other things I do need to bring up is, we're going on the assumption that our fees for 2018 will stay the same, 2018, because we haven't been notified that there's going to be an increase. And we're supposed to be notified by November if there was going to be an increase. So tax statements are prepared, and we're, we're assuming that there's not gonna be an increase for 2018. That's just some of the things I wanted to explain. I wanted you to understand that we're, we're paying a lot of our own expenses.
Okay, so if I go back to the meeting in, in, in July, so you've got two lift stations that are very, very old, well outside of the parameters of when they should be replaced. And what I've heard consistently is that is because of the good work that our, that our staff is doing of keeping them running. And the reason why we keep it under the $500 is because Jim and his crew are basically bail wiring them together to keep them running. And so, so, yeah, there might be $250,000 sitting there, but we know there's about a million dollars worth of expenses. I think it's four-something on one of them, and, and the mid-fours on the other as well. I'm going from memory now from July, so somebody help me with numbers if I'm way off. But I think I'm fairly close. And then, so basically, you know, we've got $250,000 there to cover close to a million-dollar expense that could happen overnight. And we could say we agree to this for January 1, those could go down, the city would be on the hook for a million dollars on January 2, with only 250 to replace it, using the formula that we just put in place here to correct that. So, so am I hearing you're for this, or you're against it? I'm, I'm a little confused.
No, I, I think it would be great if the city would take it over. I think it would be a good idea. I just want everybody to understand that Eagle Lake Sewer System has been kicking a large amount of money into the city service without a lot of input. In other words, if you have to replace a pump, you divide it between your 7,500 plus our three, we're helping to pay it. Granted, it's a small portion, but we're helping to pay it. The city users are not helping to pay any of the expenses that we've had out there for 40 years.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember, Ms. Councilmember Nelson, fellow of Shantus.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Would you just review the structure? So we talk about the county, but are we talking about the Eagle Lake Association versus the county? Is it the same thing? What does the county get? What does the Eagle Lake, and would that go away if we took it over? I remember the negotiations a few years ago, but I'm, just would like to hear a clarification of the actual structure.
Well, the system is owned by the county. The association is the collection of, of users of the Eagle Lake System. If the city were to take it over, I think it's fair to say there would no longer be a need for the Eagle Lake Sewer Association. So the current owner is the county.
So the money that she's referring to is the same money that the county is talking about being in the reserve?
Right. Yep.
Councilmember Shantus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to clarify one item. When we were talking about the $35,000 that the county retains, and also the service the county is providing as collecting the property taxes, or collecting the fee from the owners through property taxes, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. If we were to receive that $35,000 plus the reserves, I assume that means the county would no longer be collecting that fee, and that would be our responsibility? Is that...
Well, that would be worked out in the details, but the, our plan is, initial plans were, we'd continue to collect the tax. So you wouldn't have to individual bill into the 361 people out there. Then, just like we do now, we'd cut you a check once, twice, three times a year for your payment.
So whether we owned the system or not, that would...
Because right now, it comes through the taxes, and that's the county auditor's, treasurer's job already.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, just one point of clarity on the tax piece. For 2018, because there's tax statements that are already out, those rates would not be able to be changed because the public wasn't notified.
Okay. Right. Then the second question, if I could? I'd like to get a little bit of history of the expenses that the, the association or the board has been paying, because if we assumed the responsibility of that, then that becomes our financial burden, right? So what is the track record been for improvements that have needed to have been done in the past?
I could tell you if I had my computer here, but I don't. I could pull that, please.
Yes.
Over a period of how many years? We periodically, as the city says, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, we just have it done. Some years, it's an extra $40,000. Some years, it's an extra $50,000. Some years, it's $10,000. And it varies based on what ever needs to be updated. The city has done a great job of keeping us aware of what needs to be done. And when they say this needs to be done, we just hire it up. And if you want those records, I could pull it up.
No, I, that at least gives me an idea of $50,000 as a maximum versus $200,000 in a given year. Thank you.
Mike, do you wanna explain this?
Sure. So, and this gets to the last question, too. So behind this, there's a lot of gory details where we looked at. These, this is a 45-year-old system. So we looked at the condition of the system and what's new and what isn't new. And so, the Eagle Lake has been making investments, I think, one, two, three, four, four of the pumps, five, one, two, three, four, at least four of the pump stations have pumps that are new since 2000. Five, if you go back to 99. So they've replaced pumps. Almost all the valves within the station have been replaced. Since like the 2000 vintage, they've coated a number of the pump stations. So it's been well cared for. Since like the 2000 vintage, they've coated a number of the pump stations. So it's been well cared for. So they have made some pretty significant investments. And that's one of the reasons why in this 45-year-old system, it only needs, it's a lot of money, but it only needs, you know, $200,000 in the near term and 1.7 million dollars in the far term, because they have been making investments. And we'd be happy to share all of that information. We kind of went through more of that when we met in July 25th, but they haven't ignored this system for 45 years. They've been keeping it up.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on the differences. I remember when we were negotiating rates a few years ago, that what differences would there be between the Eagle Lake resident and the city resident? I know meters are one, but is there any other differences as far as usage? Or that the residents in the city versus the residents of Eagle Lake are experiencing differences?
I think from a financial standpoint, the differences could be viewed as, and I think this is Rose's point, pretty significant. Every user in the Eagle Lake Collection System is billed as if they use about 45,000 gallons, excuse me, 55,000 gallons per year, okay? Every user, whether it's seasonal or full-time, whether it's one person or a family of six, they all pay the same rate because there's no meters. They don't have water meters. They all pay based on that assumption of 55,000 gallons per year. That's generally considered to be a typical family water usage.
And even the ones that are seasonal, there's a lot of seasonal, they still pay the same rate because they're not their six months out of year. They still pay the same rate.
So if, if there's a family living in Eagle Lake, then it's a very fair rate. It's a very fair flat rate. If it's a seasonal user, or if it's a, you know, a retired person or a retired couple or something like that, it's a high rate.
And just for an example?
Rose, Rose, if you're going to speak, you're going to have to come to the mic because this is being recorded and?
For an example, if you want to know the difference between what the city's average user and the Eagle Lake Sewer user is paying, was that your question?
I, I'm just thinking if the city's taking this over, how do we, how do we get it to be equal in the future or don't we? What's the differences? I know there were differences when we negotiate, when we talked about the rates and why things were set the way they were. But long-term, would you look to going to meters? Would you look to making changes so that it would be equalized? Or are we still going to be dealing with the same differences?
And I guess that's not a question that I can answer. I don't know if you want to tackle that one, but I'm just, right now, we, our Eagle Lake Sewer is paying on average nine bucks a month more than your average city user is. I'm thinking that's a little out of line because we're paying all of our expenses. Down in the future, I, that's, can be agreed upon.
Mr. Kleindol, can you, you and I talked about that when we stopped on Wednesday.
It's about, it's about a 12% more than what the city residents pay. So for, I, I don't have the, the current one, but in 2013, the Eagle Lake Sewer and the city reached an agreement, the Eagle Lake Sewer rate was at 48.76 dollars. And then they added $11.84 to that rate to bring their monthly rate to $60.60. So that increased. So in 2017, they're, they're paying 65, $65.09. And that, or 12% of that is, is, is above, above what, what the city pays. I don't have the exact rate in front of me, but that's, should be in the ballpark.
Councilmember Osmas followed by Councilmember Christensen.
Okay. I got a little lost in some of the figures, okay? As far as the increases, at one time you were talking about a $1.22 and another time it was $3. something. And then in that last slide, it was a $15 a year after the five to 10-year period. So what was the difference between those three figures? And what would each resident be responsible for?
Rose? Can you go to the last slide? If the, if the county took their flow to the treatment facility, the county's treatment facility around Green Lake, they would, the city would lose $285,000 of revenue.
Yep, I got that.
Yep. And every rate payer then would see an increase of $38 a year.
Got that.
Okay. Then if the city took over ownership and all $320,000 came here, and then in five to 10 years, the city decides, and the city owns this system at this point, and the city decides it's time to upgrade those pump stations. Mayor mentioned that there's two pump stations that needs a major overhaul. At that time, every rate payer in town would pay $1.22 a month, $1.22 a month, or $15 per year.
Got it.
Okay. I'm mixing years and months.
Months, that's where I got lost, sorry.
Yeah, I think I added to that confusion. You've got it as years there and I, I converted over to months, so sorry about that.
It's no problem. So, you know, in its most simple terms, the city of Wilmer faces maybe two scenarios. Every rate payer pays $38 more a year because this county's going to keep the money and go north. Or at some point, when the city decides it's time to upgrade those stations, every rate payer would pay $15 more per year. But it's also the Eagle Lake residents would be paying that $15 per year. Okay? That?
Yes, yeah, I, I missed, I missed on the month and the, and the yearly.
Yep.
Mike, just for clarification on what she just asked. But if the dollars went nor, or if the sewage went north, that actual cost is going to be more than if the, if the flow continues to go south.
For those that live in Eagle Lake, that's correct.
For those that live in Eagle Lake and also in the county.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
So, so how you were following that conversation, you need to understand that on that top scenario, city residents lose the money.
Right.
But also the Eagle Lake user and the county user actually then ends up paying more.
Right.
Councilmember Christensen. And that's the information they presented to us in July. Sorry about that.
Thank you. The $38 per year per resident, is that a real number? Because we have a lot of commercial users that, that are going to pick up some of that. And since we don't have the flow coming in here, it's less wear and tear on our equipment out there. I understand we need to retain the same amount of people to run that facility, but I don't, I don't view that $38 per year as being a real number per customer.
Per citizen?
And the, you mentioned 12% per year more that the Eagle Lake people are paying than, than the city, than an average city person. But that's, I would equate that to a, a private street where they, they need to pay more because you're supposed to be paying for the infrastructure. I mean, any upgrades as has been happening. So that when, if we, if we did decide to take this on, are we going to meter those houses? Because we may be getting more revenue. Possibility exists. Because there's a lot of full-time people around that lake. There's more every year.
The probability is greater than zero if you metered them, that you'd see the revenue go up. The probability is greater than zero. But I think if someone was playing the odds, they would expect the revenue to go down because of the seasonal users and the fact that there maybe aren't as many families up there as there are down here.
Would the intention be to meter it then? I mean, I, I'm asking.
Well, one of the things that we talked about, Councilmember Christensen, was before we went to metering in each individual home, because that would be a great expense to do is kind of what we were told, is that maybe to meter the total outflow out of, I believe it's pump seven, is that right?
Yep.
So if we metered everything going out of pump seven, and I don't know, I don't think that's been done yet, right? I mean, that was the last conversation we had, but that hasn't been done yet. If we metered, we would then be able to tell what the percentage of use was. But Mr. Kleindol said to me, Marv, be careful what you ask for. You might find out what you don't want to know. I think that's how you said it, something like that, wasn't it? Because if all of a sudden you find out that they're really flowing 30,000 instead of 50,000, and they come back and then say, well, hold on a minute here. So, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a matter of being fair too. I mean, it's a,
Right, no, I agree with that.
It's going to cost us the same amount of money to run that facility whether they're there or not.
Right.
And, and if we're going to be fair about it, that's a great idea to meter that pump seven and, and then divide it by the number of, how many people are out there, users anyway? What is it?
361.
350?
365.
365.
365, one for every day of the year, huh?
Yep.
Who paid for the original infrastructure? Did the county?
Oh yeah, you weren't here for, can you go back to that slide? That, that's a good slide for, because Councilmember Christensen, I think, asked that question the first time.
So I think one thing to keep in mind, what would the city get? The city would get a good robust system that you would be, it's consistent with the rest of the infrastructure in town. The gravity pipes are eight-inch diameter sewers or 10-inch diameter sewers. The pump stations aren't these cheesy little grinders at everybody's house. These are true pump stations, submersible pump stations like you have throughout the city and have for many years. So it's a good robust system. It's 45 years old. It's an old system, but it's been well cared for. I'd say over half of the pumps are new. A lot of the pump stations have been lined. Most of the valves and piping has been replaced. It's been well maintained. Who originally bought, paid for this system? The system was paid for, let's see, by the county, right? The city, the county originally paid for this?
And the loan.
And the loan. There was a loan from the farmer's home, so there's a federal government loan, and that's been paid off for many years.
But the county owns it, you're telling us?
County owns it.
County owns the system.
County secured the loan and built the system and paid for it. Yep. But that's all been paid off. So there are no obligations to continue to come to the city or, there's no strings attached at this point, financial strings attached, I guess.
And the 35 grand that the county's been retaining per year, this is for administration or what, what?
Upkeep, upkeep.
So, so the, the county's been paying for those repairs and not the residents? Then the extra 12% that you've been paying?
The Eagle Lake Sewer System, as the county, all the ones, all the same.
That $35,000 a year, today it's $35,000 a year. That goes into a reserve.
Okay, so that's part of that 250 you're talking about?
Right.
Okay, I, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, they use that to fund major, any improvement over $500 has been paid for by the county.
Okay, it's, it's kind of like getting a used car and then we get the maintenance on it for every year until you buy a new one, basically. And has our wastewater people, they've been out, they've reviewed and viewed everything. They know that system is in X amount of shape or do we, do they know that?
Yeah.
So they're the ones that came up with the cost of the repairs, future repairs that are due?
This, first off, the city staff that has been operating and maintaining this, probably since the beginning of time, has treated it from the very beginning like one of their own. And they've done, you know, they've done an exceptional job here in town. They've done an exceptional job at Eagle Lake. This wasn't developed, this capital improvement pro, plan wasn't put together kind of in a vacuum, you know, just working with Mel and Larry. It was done with Jim and his staff. And we've gone through kind of a couple of iterations to make sure they're completely on board and in agreement with these things. And I think, Jim, you guys looked at it from the perspective that what things would you want done if you owned it? If it was one of your own. So this is, this was, this was a collaborative effort between the people that operate and maintain it and the people that own it. The, the point about, I don't want anyone to think I'm misleading anyone, the $38 per year increase that's listed there, that's an average. Yep, you would have some commercial users that use a lot of water. They would probably pay more than $38 a year and a lot of households would pay less than that, or households would pay less than that. So that is just the 285 divided by the number of connections.
Right, I understand that.
Yep. And it's just an, an effort to be really simple for a conversation like this.
Yeah. This isn't something you do overnight. I mean,
Right.
There'd be some thought by us.
You bet. I think the, the metering thing, you know, I think what, as Marv said earlier, there's really these two big, very different alternatives. And this county's looking for direction. And I think the hope is to have an understanding, is the preferred option the top option or the bottom option? Is it county retains it or the city signs the adoption papers and, and makes it their own? Then some of the fine details, we've got a year to work through those. And I don't think they're big hurdles to get over, but they're things that we need to address. Maybe the city wants to own it only if there is a low meter there.
Is there much infiltration in this system? I mean, is there, is there much groundwater coming into it like there's in Green Lake? Or is this pretty solid and sealed up? Do we know that?
I, I think from an infiltration standpoint, groundwater, year in, day in and day out through the course of the year, there's nothing excessive here. When it rains really, really hard, just like some of your other pump stations in town, there's some pretty, yeah, some peak flow issues. And that's what a couple of those issues will address. When those pumps, when those two pump stations are replaced, they'll probably be made bigger. They should be made bigger. From a design standpoint, they're adequate. But for a 45-year-old system that leaks a little bit when it rains, those two stations, when it's time to address them, probably would be made bigger. But there's no compelling reason, there's no regulatory driver to do something sooner than that. MPCA is not telling anyone that they need to address the capacity on those two stations.
Yeah, we have the capacity. I mean, we built a system for that to handle more capacity.
Right.
The buck 22 a month that'll cover the cost of, well, you had up there a million dollars worth of improvements over the next 10 years, was it? Or how many years?
One to five.
One to five years?
Well, one to five is $200,000. And then five, years five through 10,
The pumps get replaced?
Yep, the pump stations, these are the numbers that Mel was talking about. There's a five to 10-year category. I probably can't walk away from the mic. There is the big ticket. That's what's driving that cost of the five to 10-year timeframe.
So it's a buck 22 per average person in, in the whole system, Eagle Lake and Wilmer?
Right.
And that buck 22 wouldn't kick in though for?
Correct. When you decide.
The five to the 10-year part, basically.
Correct.
Point. That's something we've got to sell to people also. It, it seems reasonable to me since something needs to be done, but thank you.
I think one of the other things to remember, oh, hold on a minute, I'll go to Sean first. Sean and then Julie.
First of all, thanks for the information. I was unfortunately not able to attend the July 25th meeting, so I'm taking notes. I'm trying to make some equitable comparisons.
Okay.
My question's actually, first question's not for you. It's actually for someone on our own staff. Where are we sitting at our zero to five-year costs of our system? And where are we sitting from the five to 10-year costs of operating our system? Because we're talking about flow coming one way and the customer's adjustment to pay for 1.7 million dollars of, of projected expenses here. I don't know what our expenses of our own system are because I'm assuming there'll be costs that will flow northward on that as well. So the 1.22, that's adjusting for these lift stations in our own system, in the system of Eagle Lake. We have our own systems and I don't know what our expenses are. But if it's going to be a shared system, that'll be a shared expenses as well. So I'd like to know, I mean, where are we sitting? I, I know that was, it just came to my head. I'm sorry if I caught you off guard, but.
Mr. Christensen, Public Works Director.
And I may have to, thank you, I may have to refer to, defer to Jim for a little bit, but if I'm understanding the question correctly, we've got a number of lift stations. We've got, I think, three more to replace that are in the immediate, I say immediate, the next five years. I don't know that we've gone beyond that, have we, Jim, as far as replacement? Although we've replaced three since I've been here, so, you know, for round numbers, we've replaced six stations in the last, you know, three, in five years, we'll have replaced six stations.
Exactly. And, I mean, and we have more scheduled, I would assume, in this five to 10-year window.
Within five, yes. Beyond that, I'm not sure we've, we've gone much beyond that. Mike actually helped us with some of that planning to do that as well. So very familiar with the system as a whole. But yeah, I think we've, I think we've got, we've got a pretty good handle on the next five years anyway.
And just to kind of follow on that. And just to kind of follow on that, in terms of the, kind of the equitable comparison, you know, three of them, three of those pump stations have been replaced since Sean has been here.
Right, I know, I know, I've proved some of those sitting around the table, so I'm just trying to say, if we're gonna have some equitable balance, we're not suggesting that the dollar twenty-two would be a cap in any way, shape, or form with anyone living in an Eagle Lake sewer system district. Those three hundred and sixty-five people that would come on to an entire system are aware that there is then cost to run the entire system.
Yeah, you bet. And the Eagle Lake residents have helped the city pay for those three pump stations.
I understand.
And I think that's, you know, you can, you can, you can probably appreciate the county's view that they've helped.
Again, I'm just trying to get a handle on the entire snapshot. What does it cost to put a water meter on?
Sean, could it hold just a second? A Finance Director wanted to make a comment in regards to the ongoing expenses coming out.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, when the city built the initial plant, we did a rate study. That was a four-year implementation of a rate study, I believe. And the rates were set through two thousand seventeen. When that was done, at that time, it was analyzed on what the capital needs would be for the waste treatment plant. I'm not sure, and Mike can maybe help me with this, if Eagle Lake was included. I know there was some service territory areas. I don't believe they were included in the city's rates. And that's why there was no notice for a two thousand eighteen rate increase. We would normally have proceeded with that discussion in the budget process that we'll be talking about later in the meeting. But this agreement between Eagle Lake and the city is somewhat an item that will be discussed and reviewed when we do look at the rates and then the, what the profit or what the annual profit has been for the current city's waste treatment plant. One of the things I believe, if I could just highlight on the, on the cost for the Eagle Lake system that isn't being discussed or taken into consideration is their portion of operating costs for the plant and the actual treatment. I believe all the numbers that are being discussed are only for the physical distribution or collection system from Eagle Lake.
The, you're absolutely right, Steve. That twenty thousand dollars right there that we talked about at the onset, that's for the people to go out to Eagle Lake. It's for electricity to run those pump stations. It's for the miles back and forth. Of course, there's a cost of treatment beyond that.
Just a couple other ones. What is the cost? I mean, we talked about metered for individual system or individual homes versus a pump station. Do you have numbers for that, what it would cost? I mean, I heard people say it's excessive, but what is, what would be the cost to do individual meters?
Well, one of the things that, one of the things that we heard from MUC when we had our meeting with them a couple of weeks ago is that just to do the monthly billing is between twenty-five and twenty-six dollars per connection. So that in itself eats up the dollar twenty-two.
I understand. I just wanna know what the cost of actually putting one on a home would be.
I'm assuming that. Jim or Mel, do we know that answer? It's not a, it's not a typical thing from what I understand. Typically, what you do is you measure the water going in and you don't measure the outflow going out, is what I was told. And so, I mean, we could maybe put meters, and I guess that'd be a Water Department question, but how much it costs for each meter to put a meter on. But then I think, I'm gonna assume for the county, but if we go to monthly billing, you're not interested.
Yeah. Okay. And what is about a fifty-five thousand gallon per year usage on a current Wilmer facility or a person? Because, I mean, again, I wanna know a sense of apples.
That's a common number. Fifty-five thousand gallons per year is commonly viewed as the usage by a family. A family is generally, well, it's probably more than two point seven people. A typical residence is about two point seven people. But that fifty-five thousand gallons per year, that's generally associated with a family year-round. And so you make something that has been traditionally pretty simple, pretty complicated if you have to put meters on these different wells, these well systems. And now you've gotta send out individual bills for all of those. And I think what you'd find, I think what you'd find is your revenue would go down.
I don't doubt that, actually.
Yeah. So it might be a reasonable thing to meet in the middle and meter the flow that comes out of Eagle Lake at that terminal pump station. But I think you'd find that revenues would go down.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, thank you. Off of Sean's question, when he was asking about the expenses for the Wilmer system as a whole, we, if we've replaced the three or the six pumps over the last five years, we've absorbed those expenses and the, without major increases to each individual homeowner, correct?
That's correct, although we've, we've, some of those dollars have come out of general operating while some of them have come from loans. But generally, yes, we've absorbed those costs.
Okay. So if we've replaced six and we, in the next five years, we have to replace another three or six, that's kind of been normal operating expenses?
Correct, yeah. We've got three on the list to replace.
Okay. And then back to what the mayor had brought up.
Our Finance Director wants to add to that answer.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to what Sean has said, the capital, as I mentioned, was factored into what we had projected when we did the rates, the four-year rate structure. And so those were built into the rates as a debt service cost. The part of the rates in the debt service cost in the council adopted was to maintain one year's debt service and six months of operating. And so the actual capital cost and the depreciation would be in the operating side, but the capital costs were factored in.
Okay.
As I mentioned, we would now, when we look to update the rates, we would take and review that again and make sure that we have updated numbers on the number of lift stations that still remain to be replaced.
Okay.
So I think in layman's terms, if we add this system in, you add that into the capital.
If that is what the council chooses to do, we would have to have to consider that as a capital expenditure, correct?
So Steve, the city did something similar to this in the next five years or so. Here's the capital costs that we're gonna have. Here's the revenue we need to pay the debt service. So the city went through a similar exercise to this and built that into their rates, anticipating that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the present rates, and we'll talk about this maybe when we get into the budgeting, does not appear to need to be increased in two thousand eighteen, and that's why we're able to have this discussion tonight.
Okay.
Want to close that loop before we got too far past it?
Perfect. Okay, thank you. And then, as you, the mayor had pointed out, worst-case scenario is, would be if it broke down in that zero to five years before we were looking at replacing the one point seven million, replacing the whole system, correct? And then we would need to come up with some way to pay that. What are our options with that?
Well, at that point, anything's on the table. I mean, you could use wastewater treatment reserves. You could, you could bond for it. You could try to go back out to PFF, like what Mike talked about. I think he said those rates right now are two point seven.
Yep.
Approximately.
The vicinity of that.
We could, you know, what we've tried to do as a council policy for the last three years is try to place that money locally if we can. But we probably can't touch the PFF. That's what we've used PFF in the past. Uh, PFA, I'm sorry.
PFA.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So what the council, the council needs to give direction to the county tonight is, are we thinking we wanna stay with the system that we have? Where they have the flow come into us? What I'm hearing is some desire to have the flow of pump seven to see what the actual flow is. There's some desire to do that. Or do we wanna tell them, you need to redirect and go and start looking at taking the flow to Eagle, uh, to Green Lake rather than having it come to Wilmer? So I think that that's kind of, you know, when you break it down to the smallest pieces, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Councilmember Christianson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Give your hand up.
I'm still thinking on this one twenty-two a month per average home is using fifty-five thousand gallons. To the husband and wife that have four or more kids, that number's gonna be considerably more. And what's the average gonna be for a fast food restaurant home that uses a lot of water? You know, they pay a big chunk of what's going on out of industry and commercial entities in town. And we very rarely talk about them. We always say the average home is gonna increase by this much, whether it's property taxes or electricity or sewer and water. We never talk about, you know, the people that use a lot of water. Has that number ever been looked at?
It hasn't yet.
Because that's gonna increase more than a buck twenty-two a month for those people. Now, they can probably get it back from customers, where the average mom and pop with four kids or more at home, they can't get it back from anybody. They can't go to their employer and say, well, I need, you know, four dollars and twenty cents a month more for my water and sewer, so.
Same is true, both of those scenarios. If the county goes north, those large water users that you talked about, they're gonna suffer more. And the people that, and if the county continues to come down here, when that day comes, it's time to upgrade a couple of pump stations, then some of the large water users will pay more than a dollar twenty-two. It's same both ways. You're exactly right. But for the purposes of, you know, tonight, trying to keep it simple, we just take that revenue and divide it by the number of users. And that's an honest attempt to be simple, but yet representative.
It's, it's trying to be sold to us. I understand that, but we gotta, I don't know if I can make my mind up tonight or not. I mean, I gotta think about this. It's more than just saying, yeah, we should go ahead and take it because someone's offering us a buck twenty-two instead of X amount of dollars more. But thank you for the information. It really does help, Mike.
And we'd be happy to sit down with Steve and get into the gory details of the city's rate structure and kind of back out by user class rather than one twenty-two, what those different increases would be.
I'm gonna go home and see if we use fifty-five thousand gallons, which I hear or not. And I'm gonna ask my son, who's got four boys, the same question.
Yeah.
How many gallons he was, thank you again. It's important and we need the information, all the information we can. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Just another clarification. If I'm hearing correctly, our options are either one or three. The county doesn't want to stay with two. And so that's, I guess, the question that I have is, we're either looking at the county, we're either looking at immediate increases if we go with option one, or we're continuing with the way the system was designed and what the plan was for Eagle Lake with option three. So am I correct that the county doesn't want to just continue as is?
Well, at this point, the county has not had that discussion. Our, our agreement was, when we did the contract forty-five years ago, forty-eight years ago now, is that when that contract was up, that agreement was up, that the city was gonna take it over. So that's the first choice that we're working off of. These other options here has not been presented fully to the board. We've, we've talked about it at the work session on the twenty-fifth, but our druthers is to follow what the original agreement was in nineteen seventy-one.
Well, Neeson, if you wanna.
Come to the mic, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Council folks, I represent half of Eagle Lake. And I would much rather tell them, well, it's gonna cost you a dollar twenty-two more if we go to the city, city-owned, rather than if, if we do it ourselves, it's gonna cost you twenty-six dollars and some cents a month. That's one consideration. If we, if the county does it and goes the other direction, then everybody in the county, including all the folks in the city, are gonna be paying four dollars and eight cents a month more. So it seems to me a slam dunk. And I actually represent Ward One Precinct One and Ward Three Precinct One too. So I think, and I live in the city, and I'm willing to, on behalf and to be fair to the folks out at Eagle Lake, to pay that dollar and twenty-two cents a month, or whatever it is, to be fair to those folks. And that's really all I just wanted you folks to consider.
You know, I don't want, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I will say, I mean, a series of my questions is to try to find an equitable piece, which maybe already suggests that I, I am not opposed to moving with that, forward with it. I think you just need to negotiate out those fine details of how that's going to work, regardless of what the revenue stream is up there and whether or not you think it can be accurate or skewed. The fact of the matter is, if we have a situation where we made a agreement and we need to honor that agreement but make it as palatable for everyone, we just need to explore that. I would be in favor of moving towards that, the city-owned system with more details to be hammered out.
So am I seeing consensus that we wanna move that direction? I mean, we need more information, but understanding that we have all of twenty eighteen to work the details out. And, but the council needs to give direction to the county by the end of the year, so the county has some direction as far as what they're gonna do. So we either need to, you know, bring this back at our next regular meeting or on the eighteenth, bring it back so that we can give direction to the county. And, you know, I think that that would meet into the parameters that we're talking about. I see Larry's having a sidebar conversation, but just wanna make sure that that's gonna work. Is that gonna work for you? If we bring it back either on the fourth or the eighteenth?
Yes.
To give you direction and then we have all, well, we really don't have all of the year because we'd have to have it done probably by August so that you know how to do it on the taxes, but, and we can get some of these answers as far as how much is it gonna cost if we're gonna do a flow meter on each individual house? What's it gonna cost if we do a flow on pump seven? And then the other piece is, is what Councilmember Christianson said, you know, what if we find out that in reality, they're pumping a third of it? Or a half of it, or something different? Are we then gonna, to be equitable, like Councilmember Christianson said, do we then reduce the rates? You know, I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of the question that I asked you, Larry, in your office that day. You know, once you know the answer, then you have to deal with it. So, so I mean, do we want to, I mean, do we want it? How do we wanna proceed? So. Right? Is that what we need to decide? So we wanna bring this back to the fourth or the eighteenth?
Councilmember Christianson followed by Nelson.
Could we get a copy of this, this PowerPoint so that, I mean, I'm gonna talk to a few people about it too. I'm not just gonna make my own decision here. It's, it affects everybody in town. We have a lot of people in my ward that are retired on fixed incomes and they need to throw their two cents in here too also. But whether we talk about it, are we gonna discuss it at a council meeting so we can actually?
Vote on it.
Motion and?
Right.
Would that be the next one?
That's what I'm asking. Do you want it on the fourth or you want it on the eighteenth? I think the eighteenth gives us more time to talk.
Oh, yeah, fourth is next week?
Right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson followed by Mesky.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. So some of the parameters you're talking about, though, is changing what the third option is. Because if the county's not willing, I mean, if we're talking about meters and we're talking, now we're talking a whole different system, the county's not gonna run it through taxes. We're talking about that whole structure. So I guess I question whether that's really an option at this point in time. Or, you know, is that something that down the road you'd look at, a second look at? Or, I'm just concerned how much you're talking about, because I sense we need to make a decision. And what's before us would be, I think, palatable for both sides at this point in time. Or we're gonna go back to that thirty-eight dollar a year increase that we're talking about if the county says we're gonna do it ourselves. So I'm just curious with how many parameters we're adding into this decision process.
Well, I mean, I think you, I mean, we heard from Commissioner Neeson. I mean, if we go the other way, it's gonna cost you four dollars a month. If you, if you leave it the way it's going now, it's gonna cost you a dollar twenty-two. If you lose the whole flow, it's gonna cost you another three seventeen plus another four, what'd you say, eight, four eighty? So it's gonna, so if you go the other way, it's gonna cost you eight dollars and ninety-seven cents to not have the revenue. the revenue of 285,000, or you have it come this way and it costs you $1.22. And, I mean, I'm not trying to sell anybody. I'm just telling numbers that were, that were being given to us. And I know Steve Okens will crunch all our numbers and make sure they're right, but, you know, I mean, do you want to pay eight, eight or nine dollars? Or do you want to pay $1.22? I mean, that's the numbers that you told us, Raleigh. So, Councilmember Mesky. And then if you add, if you add on the cost of the flow meters, and then you added another $2 a month to do the collection of the data and send the bills, and then you have the maintenance of the flow meters, you know, and I'm guessing they're at least 100 bucks a piece, I would guess on the cheap side. So now all of a sudden, you're, you know, I mean, I think we're, I think we're making, I think we're digging too deep into this. I think we should bring it back to the council, and Larry's going to have a chance to talk to his commissioners and see what direction they want to go, and kind of go from there, I think, so. Sean?
I was going to say, I mean, what, what you want in the next couple of meetings, I mean, as you look at those numbers, we're actually talking about 319 annual revenue with the adjustment coming back from the county. We're talking about 250,000 approximately in a savings piece that's been there for making the system work. The only thing that I would say, and I'm fine with those first two bullets, it's the increases that you're going to have to talk about. That's why I don't think the minutia we're talking about now of meters, potentially all these other things, those are all going to spin into the rate, rate increases, because you, you've quoted up there, 0% increases for the first five years, but that was for the 365 customers on the Eagle Lake system. And if they're brought in, if we're seeing any kind of discussion we're having could change that. Am I not correct on that? I mean, so I'm thinking if you want to just talk about, we want to go with the city-owned system with the 319,000, and we have the other piece, and then as we go into negotiations about how it's going to look for rate increases, if we want to add a meter to seven or whatever, those are pieces that we can talk about later. I, I don't think having all this detail right now is something we have to do.
Did you have something else?
I don't.
You're standing up. Steve, did I see your hand up? Did you want to say something?
Just quickly, if I could. Mr. Mayor, council and staff, thanks for giving us the opportunity to explain this. For the old, those of you who ran out at the last meeting that we did have at the Health and Human Service Building, it was, it was informational, it was news to me, too. So I, I feel like I'm sitting in your chair, making the same types of questions. And in this case, I think it's warranted to make the best judgment for the people that are, we're going to provide the service to, we are, as government and service-oriented. And I think this is, by, by no way, any, any idea or any concept even thought of, from what I've heard, and I have not heard any discussions about, Candyway County wanted to take the Eagle Lake Sewer District over to, over to the Green Lake Sanitary Sewer District because of definitely the cost. So that was one of the concerns I heard from people in the restaurant a few, a few months ago, too, when it was first being discussed. But overall, your decision is going to have to be to work with us, and I, I appreciate, and it's really nice to see the intergovernment cooperation, looking at it from both sides now. Thanks, and hopefully we can get this straightened out very soon. And I think your idea of a full meter is an excellent idea. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Clandall, anything else that you need from us at this point? Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm thinking here about the flow meter and pump number seven, and, you know, that would have to be done over a two- or three-year period to get an average, because last year was a wet year, and I'm sure a lot of water went through that thing, and you'd be changing the rates constantly, so maybe that's not such a good idea. It's, I mean, you're not going to get, get average until you've had two, three, four years going through there, so, so maybe leaving the system the way it is is, might be a better option. Simpler, for gosh sakes, it'd be a whole lot simpler, but just that comment. Thank you.
But I guess what I was suggesting is we get the cost, simply the cost, not to do it, but to just get the cost for the next media is what I was suggesting.
Sure, sure.
Could we get that cost?
We'd be happy to develop those.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'm confident that the financial picture that you see there, I think with flow metering, it's very likely that that financial picture will get better for the people that live in Eagle Lake, and will get worse for the city. But we'd be happy to develop that.
All we want is the flow meter cost at this point, nothing else. I'm trying to, I'm trying to direct here, but it's like herding cats. You understand? So I would rather have our citizens pay $1.22 than $9.
Yep.
I think that's, at the end of the day, that's, that's the discussion. I mean, do you want them to pay $9, or do you want them to pay $1.22? So, yeah. Okay. We're going to take a brief recess.
Thanks, everyone.